Finally, according to my agenda, it's 9:50 and that means it is time to move on to the next agenda item, so Ms. Barr, would you please read Agenda Item Number Two?
Pension function.
All right, we have Matt and Ginger are going to be handling this section today, so I will throw them over to you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Barr. I do want to give an update on our pension, our OPEB first, since just a few short months ago, we came before the City Council, we talked about a strategy that will take us through the next several years, into the next couple of decades, on how we tackle our OPEB long-term liabilities. I do want to give you an update since that point. In the course of the audit, Plan Ram was taking a look at the, what they call the single discount rate, which is basically how we anticipate our assets growing over the next couple of, well, the life of the asset. And they take a look at what GRS has submitted, GRS, Gabriel Roder Smith is the actuary that we based our plan on, it's what we based our percentages on, they've been doing our OPEB portion of the audit for the last couple of years. Found out, well, not found out, but Plan said, we think the number that Gabriel Roder Smith is utilizing is overly conservative.
Conservative.
Yeah, and so they were using a bond rating, which was 3.62%. Plan was actually looking at a rating closer to seven. Over the course of the last couple, a month or so, we've been meeting, the three of us together, we actually settled upon a 6% single discount rate, which as you can imagine, puts us in a much better position now. So I want to give you an update on OPEB. We still submitted the alternatives as they were, the plan, the funding plan has gone before the Treasury, Municipal Stability Board is meeting this month, and will likely say whether or not the plan is viable after their December meeting, but we're already now ahead of what they had talked about, so if you were called back, they had us originally at only about nine, yeah.
Twenty-five million.
Yeah, $25 million in liability. Now with just, with having a more accurate long-term projection, our long-term liabilities have lowered now to about $19 million, meaning we have gone from 19.79% funded now to 26.2% funded. And that's the difference that these numbers can make over the next several decades. So we're going to be in a much, much healthier position now when we come back to the MSV, the Municipal Stability Board, Treasury next year, and they say, so how have you done? We get to report out that we've already increased that funding by 7%, just by utilizing a more market-driven single discount rate. So it's very good news, certainly, you know, we're very public about what those long-term liabilities are, it is disappointing that they're overstated by about $6 million. But again, it's, we take it as at least it wasn't the other direction, and now we're already that much closer to our 40% threshold that the state mandates and the 100% threshold are all actually working towards. So one of the next steps for us, since much of this came out in the last week or so, we actually got the full report from GRS last night, but now we are actually going to have to rerun the alternative funding plan that we approved, rerun those numbers with the more market-driven 6% single discount rate, and we anticipate that timeline is shortening by many, many years, hopefully by a decade or so. And so what that means now is we'll have some options next year when we look at, in the course of the budgeting plan, if we still want to hold to the funding, the dollar amount schedule that we had talked about, or if we want to talk about adhering to the timeline itself. So we'll have some options for you next year when it's time to sit down and talk about this with the budget. So good news on the OPEB front. Said a lot to say a little, good news on that front there. Our review with Treasury on our PA 202 plan, even with the former amount, they were impressed with the amount that we've done, the way it's laid out in the plan, as well as how, it sounds silly to say for 25 to 30 years, but how short-term, how short we were on meeting our goal of 40 and 100% funding. So it's two good bits of information there, and we'll get, and then we'll get this uploaded to the Council Shared Drive and make sure you guys see it as well. We are anticipating Plan's making their presentation to City Council in December, they will be presenting with this information. So we'll have the chance to get it out in front of our residents now. Again, next steps are taking a look at our long-term funding strategy. I'll have GRS run those numbers by the end of this year, so it can be part of our budget conversation. Any questions specific to OPEB?
Quick question. Does GRS agree to this change in interest rate?
Yes, GRS actually, when Plan talked about it, we, Plan actuaries and GRS actuaries that we've been working with were all gathered on Congress call together, they kind of gave their side, their point of view, and ultimately both parties were able to agree on 6%. Plan did want to see something a little bit higher, they used 7.50 for Public Safety MERS, and based on the amount of assets we have and where they're invested, GRS was comfortable with that high, but they were able to mutually agree upon 6%.
It was still actuarially calculated.
It was within the bounds of what they think is, okay.
Yeah, both areas, both of them can be able to justify it, and part of the package that we received last night, there's a eight and a half or so, just to have a justification of the single discount rate.
Okay, thank you.
And before you said it was, I'm sorry, it was previously 3.1 was that?
3.62, the bond rate.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So that was, that's OPEB, I want to start with OPEB, because we are farthest along on the OPEB. Turning our attention now to pension, I uploaded it to the shared drive, an overview of where our pension systems, our both our MERS and our Public Safety Pension systems sit right now. This is actually, this is still market draft because it is, what, this is from this year, Plan was able to share with us what they have done already, so this is, not only it's up to date, but it's a little bit ahead of the curve, so, but we don't, though market draft, we don't anticipate these numbers changing. Starting first with your, with your Public Safety Pension, you can see on the page that was included here, it's marked Page 56, and the document that was uploaded, I'm not able to pull that up, but you can see, yeah, for those that have it, so you can see the progression there, the Public Safety Pension, it runs it from 2014 to 2018, you'll see where the assets have grown, as has the, or the assets have grown since 2016, so we saw 76, 78, and then our this year's calculations have us at 79.81% Public Safety Trust. As you recall, as Matt 345 community, we actually assess a mill, or a millage rate for, to cover these costs, and so we've been able to keep that millage rate stable, it's actually, was flat from last year to this year, and still continue to build the assets without it being burdened some to our residents themselves. And so we'll be coming back to, those assets are growing. We would like to have a funding strategy similar to what we did with the OPEB, that would get us a timeline on when we can reach specific thresholds. That would be our next steps with Gabriel Roder. We are very close with our pension health for the Public Safety Pension, being nearly 80%. It's, we're in a, it's a secure, very secure position. Matt, you want to jump in there on?
Hey, everybody have any questions? And we're talking about now with Public Safety Pension, what you look at on 56.
And what happened 2015 to 16 that we had on?
2015, in November 2015, I think there was a mortuary table adjustment, that was, I think that was industry-wide, because we had the same thing happen on the MERS side as well, and so, yeah, they adjusted lifespan.
A quick change to the.
They had those adjustments, lifespan, people living longer, that's why you saw some sales were dropping, people went home, they were 82 to 76, and if you look even at 14, we were 86% funding for 14. So keeping that military aligned with what our costs are going to be from here into year out, is how we keep that one healthy and growing.
Is there a risk of that happening again?
Yeah.
Does it change?
Yes. And so it will keep happening, and in one sense, we're all living a lot longer, which is a good thing for those of us, but again, for trying to gauge costs long-term, it does make it more of an impact on pension system. This is a defined benefit, defined benefit pension system still, there's been no proposed changes from staff level or from the administration, and we haven't had a conversation with Public Safety Pension Board or any of the bargaining units on making some changes there. We do have negotiations coming up this year though, and so whether it ends up being a part of the conversation or not, that's something that staff's sitting down with labor attorney to see if there's a change that are needed. There are pros and cons on both, and I'm not sure where the, I anticipate the unions' position on it, but we wouldn't be changing anything for existing, we would be only looking at, if we were to make this move to a fine contribution plan, we'd be looking only at new hires past, like the July 1, 2019 or so, starting the contract.
Any other questions?
Okay.
On to MERS now.
Our MERS plan did cease growth this year, which we're grateful for, but it is still under 60%. From last year to this year, we saw it grow from 54.58% to this year at 57.67%. Always the angle for growth in that asset, that is not, always been the case, as you look back to the documents submitted, we're seeing from 2015 to 2016, it likewise saw a drop, it was at 62, 62.57% funded before dropping to 54. And again, that's the effect that the mortuary tables had on our long-term position. We have made some changes in this plan, the MERS valuation document that we receive every year does a good job of logging all the changes that have been made to this program. This too is still a defined benefit program, and it's available to all full-time employees, all full-time hired, new hires as well. Again, this would cover your DPW, your general merit employees, so your, those are, it's a larger group there as well, and I like, we have DPW negotiations coming up this year as well, they're on the same timeline as our Public Safety contracts as well. And so likewise, if we were to have a conversation with one, we would like to have a conversation with all bargaining units, and then that effect would be, the merit system is built to mirror bargaining units as well. If there's any discussion on that particular item, there are pros and cons to making that switch, most values have gone with a hybrid system, try to ease it, but when you close a, close a program and no one's paying into it anymore, you see the initial cost rise, it really is a play for the, for the long-term cost, it's not, it doesn't have significant benefit in the near term. This, we, when we looked at this, again, MERS does evaluation every year, we do see this, we do anticipate this amount, the annual contribution climbing, but we are, it's about a 16 to 17 year, we should be reaching our 100% funding level. And you see, we'll just be doing the annuals now, we won't have to be doing any catch-ups, so we are about two decades or so away from seeing those, this number drop significantly under the current rate of return of 7.7, or 7.50. Any questions on this particular item? Like, as with the Public Safety Pension, we are looking at getting, trying to get an actuarial approved funding schedule to mirror our plan with OPEB. I don't, the way we're moving right now by next year, if our, if we can keep to the current precedent, we should be above 60%, which we won't have much concern triggering under PA 202, unless the legislature were to adjust its parameters. By again, we didn't trigger on our pension system because our annual outlays to cover these costs don't exceed 10% of our annual revenues. And that's just governmental revenue, that doesn't include your enterprise funds, which there are some costs associated in the enterprise fund with our, with our OPEB and our pension system as well, although just the state decided not to count those, but for budget purposes, we do assess costs there, because there are employees that work out of those funds and service to those funds that obviously have a benefit level.
That was one question I had, that they don't consider enterprise funds seems an oversight in the law, do you know if anybody is working to fix that defect in the law?
Consensus among practitioners is that it was, it was the wrong way to handle it. The thought from the legislature, and I haven't heard them change this position, but the thought from the legislature and I think the Treasury came to adopt the same thing, was that large enterprise funds have the ability to sort of mask issues associated with, with these costs. I'm not, my sense so far in the conversation is that they have not moved off that position. Plan, again, Plan Ram will be making their presentation, maybe we'll be able to show how we may have the net position as approved in both scenarios, we're moving in the right direction, but as we saw with the OPEB, we're already talking about decades worth of payments needed to actually get to as secure a funding level as possible. In contrast, with our other, our other debts, we have very little, and what we have, we're looking at, it's going to be off the books by 2021 as it is, so this will be, after 2021, unless something changes with, with bonding for other purposes, like community center, this will be the bulk of our long-term liabilities. Very nearly that rate. I know we don't want to, you know, with contract negotiations looming, but are there feelings from council on direction to staff on changes to benefits?
So I, I don't know if we should, but I am interested in investigating moving from defined benefit to defined contribution, and from the city perspective, it is less risk for the city, because, for example, we've already discussed, numbers change from under us, and so we've been doing well, and then now suddenly we're doing bad, those sorts of things. We would have to pay the employees more to compensate that, because we are basically taking away a benefit, and there would be a front to the budget in the short term, when we have to, you know, both fulfill our current obligations, yeah, and in no way, we're keeping the, fulfilling the concurrent obligations, I think we all absolutely are 100% on that, but, and it puts the risk on the employees, so, you know, there's pros and cons, but I am interested in, you know, can we make that transition? And it might be a 20 or 10 or 20-year transition to, you know, get there, but, you know, how will that help the city in the long-term, even if it is a little difficult in the short term?
So I feel the practical economic impact, do anyone else have thoughts on the impact of moving from defined benefit to defined contribution? Is everybody familiar with what that means? Understand the impact that that's going to have? It's not, I mean, it's something that we've seen happen at pretty large scale, private companies, I mean, it's rare to have defined benefit contribution plans, but in the general context of the remaining best of that were typically municipal employees, state employees, and MERS employees, who are one of the few that still had that option available. Matt, do you know how many, I'm sure it was on the spot, but is that, is that a common practice to go into municipal arena right now?
From DPW PC?
Yeah.
Yes, it has been, it has been pretty widespread throughout, so I know, in fact, several of the new hires that we've made on Public Safety, I think, have listed that they, one of the reasons why they made a jump from their current employers was the increased benefit levels that we have here, it is, it is something that we were able to use to recruit, so it's going to hang the total force in that regard.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is a, it is a tremendous benefit, and we're not doing our job if we're not looking at all the different scenarios and the impact that it has, but it would be a significant change, and I think it is something that may make it harder for us to attract and entertain, given what attention.
Yes. Thank you, yeah, I was just going to offer that the Michigan Municipal League, among other bodies, can help provide us with additional guidance and examples to, best practices to, to ensure we have the tools at our availability to attract and retain the talent that we need to serve our residents in business as well, so. Although, yeah, there are lots of things in the private sector that can translate into public sector, there's, we want to be very cautious with blindly just bringing anything in just because it's in a popular trend, because we are a different kind of function here, so it's good to be deliberate and thoughtful about it, but yet to still understand the context of what we operate in.
And I had, as one of my other priorities, how do we attract and retain quality employees? And, yeah, so I understand the trade-offs of, that that is an attractive benefit that we offer, so, you know, if we take that away, we have to provide something else that would attract.
Kind of count as the only way.
I know.
Exactly, same thing with the changes to the healthcare, definitely ends up being, they make up this compensation.
So when, back to your original question.
Yeah.
In terms of, when you were looking at, you know, negotiations, and what are things that maybe we want to look at? When you were talking about benefits, were you talking about specifically the healthcare plan?
The healthcare plan, we have some more options on as well, which we have not done in the last couple of years, has gone to, there's, a lot of past couple of years ago, PA 152 that provided cities with some specific options, you could go to an 80/20 health cost sharing premiums with your employees, or go to what they call the hard cap, which is set by Treasury each year, we have a lot to adopt out every year for our new members, and we are very, for benefit, we don't ask our employees to share in that cost right now, and moving to a self-funded healthcare module has been, has been very helpful on keeping those costs low for us. If you recall, we avoided almost a 29% jump in healthcare premiums by moving to a self-funded platform, and I'm sure it's, it's, cities will work with our benefit, our agent of record on keeping those costs low, so we're not, I don't want to make any changes there, at least in this, this contract here. So if you know the other option that we would be looking at, would be changes to pensions.
Just give a little context on, on the opting out, because as you mentioned, that's something that we've elected to do every year, for council members that may not have been around, we've done that, and we've talked about why we do it, but that was a very important part of that negotiation, to work with the unions that we were negotiating with, and the way that made sense for everybody, was yes, we're going to have to move to this, but we're also going to have the ability to do this. And for me, remembering those conversations vividly, I typically like to, you know, go back on the things that were, we said we were going to do. Now, again, situations change, and there may be, but in, it's just a general rule, I would hate to see us switch our stance on that.
Right.
Because then, if you start to do that, you start to change the rapport that's been built up, but negotiations, and I'm not saying I'm recommending that.
No, I'm not.
Negotiations are always a heated issue, we've had situations here over the last decade where they've been very heated, and the fact that, you know, people on both sides had given, and leaders had come in, a lot of different things. We've done a pretty good job recently of rebuilding those relationships and truly bargaining in good faith, and I want to make sure that we continue to do that and not lose some of that.
And on healthcare, planning around healthcare to care advise me, it is an absolute wild card, and I see it as a huge risk, because we just don't know year to year how big the increases are going to be, and I don't have any suggestions, just say, I don't know how we mitigate around that risk and what we can do around that, but.
On that, so one of the things on the self-funding platform that we're able to do now is you're not subject to now as much the industry changes, but your specific experience of the employees themselves are what change your, your funding from year to year, so we do have more ownership of it now, so incentivizing healthy living, incentivizing the use of generic drugs, wellness, things like that are how we end up keeping those costs not lower, even when, you know, formerly we were part of the pool, if the pool ends up being heavily into, you know, non-genetic prescription drugs, then we would see the cost of that associated with us, that's one of these, why we're going to see it so high. So we can talk about, I'm not sure what we can do about it, basically ownership of one's own health is where a lot of these self-funding, funding platforms seem to be most successful, and being able to provide access to wellness, whether it's clinics, whether it's, you know, frequent checkups, I've heard, I think, massage and chiropractors in the past, but being able to incentivize employees to take more ownership of their health, as opposed to just waiting to the risk, taking them to the doctor, or waiting too long to find out that they have something to be treated, it's one of the efforts that we need to put in to keep those costs low.
And, well, then, in that being, if you identify any programs that we could invest in that would potentially have a long-term impact on lowering our health costs and keeping workflows more fit, I definitely would love to entertain those.
Switches to the items?
To advance, I think we've done a couple of these items.
Yeah.
And the next steps, you already. That was, again, that was our update on pension and our long-term costs for any other parting questions here.
Questions on this, obviously, this is something that we've talked about every year, and it came up a lot during the last election cycle for a number of reasons, and some of them were not necessarily true, some of them were potential facts. I think it's important for us to make sure that everybody is aware of what's happening, especially, you know, the employees, former employees, but the residents as well, because it's real easy to pull on that and say, ah, you're not going to fund your pension, and just to start a negative reaction, because it's emotional, it's an emotional response, it's one of those easy fear factor things for people to hit on, but for us, we've been focused on that for at least a decade, since we've, since we've been around, and it is clearly important, and the fact that, you know, the state put us in that, you know, program, and we had to submit, didn't help, we're out of that now, and we are on track, and I think we are honoring our long-term liabilities, and we're doing everything that we can, and that doesn't mean we can't do more, like we talked about at the council meeting, because this is the track that we're on, we could increase our contributions if it made sense in our budget.
And on that topic, Plan Director just reminded me, we, as we get, getting closer to having the finalized audit numbers, we are looking at a significant increase to fund balance this year, so we anticipated having about a half a million dollars, it looks like it's going to be closer to a million dollars this year, so we will have some options on. We talked about it at the last budget session, on having a percentage basis, where if we know we're contributing to fund balance at the end of one year, we select a funding model or 15 plus percent or so, and automatically contribute that to pension or OPEB costs. So we will have a substantial, we have an opportunity to make substantial pay down on one of those items, or we can spread out amongst them, we're just awaiting the final audit numbers from Plan Ram.
And I think moving forward, you know, after we did our, you know, our budget, we have our budget hearings, and there's maybe a couple of people here, a couple of residents that show up, and then we have the meeting where we approve it, and we hit, you know, some of the highlights, and since we knew that we were on a track to fund these things, I don't think we gave it as much discussion. it as much discussion at the meetings, or really highlighted it as much as we need to start in the future, because it is important, and it's obviously important to residents. We need to make sure that we're keeping this top of mind too, so when we do have those discussions, look, here's what we're on track for, here are our percentages, we have some, you know, when we talk at those budget hearings, and we have room in our budget, we're allocating more, more contributions over there, those are things that we really need to highlight, because again, that just goes to, back to that public trust, that was one of the goals early on. It's not that we're not doing it, we've been doing it, and we're going to continue to do it, but I don't think the public necessarily realizes it, because for us, it's something that we're just used to seeing in the budget, it's a priority. But we need to make sure that we're doing a much better job of showing the residents that it is a priority for us, and that we are continuing on this path, and that we have a plan in place, and we're sticking to it, to make sure that we do honor our promises.
Yeah, Dan, I do think, I do think that's a key point. So much of us, all of us here are experts in our own fields, our own departments, we know what's going on in the intricacies of day-to-day operations and the big picture strategies that we have. And it's part of our function, it's what we do, is we're deeply involved in that. The hardest challenge is how to communicate that crisply, succinctly, in a distilled manner, like we saw earlier with the vision and mission statements, right? Those are very succinct, poignant statements that carry a lot of information. One of the things that I had written down here in addition to communication is, is, you know, I had written social media rapid response, but I think a better framing is just being intentional with how we can distill the essence of something into something that be, that can be digested and understood by, by residents who aren't as steeped in this stuff like we are, you know, and, and although, you know, they depend on us to be the experts in these different areas, and we need to find a way to communicate that, demonstrate that. And it's just, I think it's all a matter of change management and, and, like communication, so, I mean, that's, that's just it, you know? Somebody doesn't understand something, so they fill in their blanks with their own prejudices, and sometimes that's to the benefit and sometimes to the detriment.
Yeah, example of that, I heard this morning, why is the city redoing the brick intersection?
I heard that a couple days ago.
Are you out of your mind? It's not our project. We don't have bricks there now.
No.
We're not putting bricks back in. Where did you hear that? Oh, someone supposed to me, you said it.
Oh.
It's not even close to, I have no idea where people jumped, which is what they do. When they, in the absence of information, they're going to try to fill in those blanks. And we did put information out about the second, it's pretty clear what was going on, but regardless. Jack?
One thing I think we need to do is, we've, we've seen here today on OPEB, the fact that Plan Moran and GRS can have two different numbers, we get together and resolve the two numbers, our pension, our OPEB liability changes dramatically. Now somehow, we need to explain that to the citizens, to residents, to say, hey, we don't need to put in $2 million, we don't, you know, it's not that we're not working on this thing, it's the factors in the, the system. They don't understand that at all, and we need to say, we're watching this, we're, you guys negotiated an agreement and put us into a very good position without putting any money in. So we could, the residents can look at that as a cost avoidance, but it's, it's something that we did, you did, that is a good thing. How do we tell the people so they understand that?
And in that vein, we, in the lead-up to the, to the election, we were trying to put these long-term costs into context too, because they are, when you hear we owe 14 million, 26 million, whatever it ends up being, it's something a huge number, people don't realize that these are actuarial driven, they're very educated guesses, but they are guesses, and they have four, three to four decade timelines where they're going to owe. That was one of the issues we had to be 74 and 75. To present this as one singular number, when it is actually a succession of, of payments over a period of time.
Yeah.
And we struggle to try to put that in context with our residents, and be, I was trying to align it to the home mortgage or something like that. You may owe $300,000 over the next 30 years, but it's because, you know, you're carrying $300,000 in debt right now, and you don't, you don't owe it right now, but it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that framing in terms of how to make it relevant to understand to, to them is really important, right? And that's one of the challenges of communication, is like, you know what's in your head, but how can you communicate it in a way that they can receive it? And that, that framing is a, is a, is a good example of that, right? Framing in a, in a way that they can understand, it's like, oh, okay, I get it, mortgages, all right, yeah, now let them, now I understand.
It's important, but it doesn't, you know, it's, it's important to the city to keep this funded, but it isn't something that's going to bankrupt us tomorrow. It's something, they look at that much, don't they?
It's not owed today.
Right.
Right. It's not today.
And two groups get together and make a decision, and $6 million change.
Yeah, if you had 70%, let's go on your house and your bank right now, you'd feel pretty good about that, and that's similar to the position the city's currently in.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts from council on this? Jane, do you have anything we're, we're missing here on this side? Stick it to, we have, we've seen some already change, already positive changes, now having to put another dollar in there, which is important for us to make sure we're looking at this as well. Well, here, the plan's going to be.
Going to be presented, and then we'll have funding strategies that mirror the alternatives 1 through 4 for public safety pension and MERS pension as well. And then as well as a suggested funding ratio for the hand of fund balance at the end of this whole year, in relation to those long-term costs.
Anything else from anybody? How's everybody doing? We good? Need a minute? Five minutes? Here we go, so many, stretch your legs, we, we did well on that section. Let's take, let's take about five, six minutes, and then we'll, we'll come back and we'll move on to Matt and Derek.